Good evening. First of all, thank you so much to everyone. My name is Dr. Jasmine Jenkins, and I'm the Executive Director of Houstonians for Great Public Schools. I am so delighted to welcome you all to our third biennial HISD School Board Candidate Forum. Thank you. Give yourselves a round of applause. We really appreciate everyone coming out and joining us this evening for making it. We also want to thank everyone who's joined us via livestream. We know that there are both varying degrees of comfort, and we want to operate in as safe of a space as possible. Appreciate you all complying and wearing masks. If at any point you would prefer, I know that it's kind of hot, but the sun will go down. And if at any point you would prefer, you can join us outside. You should be able to hear from the patio and use some of the patio furniture that's out there. Also, as I mentioned earlier, there is a livestream that you can join us as well. And welcome to everyone who's joining us online. Tonight, we are so grateful to welcome 15 of the 16 HISD School Board candidates who are running for seats in Districts 1, 5, 6, 7, and 9. These folks include five sitting trustees, as well as 10 challengers to those seats. I know from personal experience that it takes a lot to decide to run for office. A lot of personal and professional sacrifice goes into it, and that's not a decision that's taken lightly. And so I do want to thank those candidates and thank those trustees for coming tonight. I let the trustees, the current sitting trustees who are running, know already, and I want to make sure that the audience knows as well. I am not being rude or improper. However, for the next two hours, our HISD trustees who are running for their seats will be candidates like any other. We recognize that they are incumbents, but I will refer to them as "mooze" in all of their cases. And I just wanted to make sure that the audience knew that as well. That's not me being rude or dismissing their current title, but tonight they are candidates along with the rest of the group. I also want to acknowledge Global Speak Translations, who are in this space. And I wanted to let you know que este es un espacio bilingüe, that we are in a space that is bilingual. And because of that, we have invited this organization to provide us with interpretation services. So candidates, please be advised, you will be interpreted in Spanish as you speak. We've got our wonderful interpreters in this little booth over here, and they're providing it in headsets. Also, if anyone needs a headset, please let them know, and they're more than happy to. Oh, over here, we've got where you can get your headset. So perfect. And we are so grateful for having them with us. This is a woman-of-color-owned business, and we're so happy to be able to partner with them this evening. We also, I want to acknowledge everybody in this in not acknowledging the Houston GPS Board of Directors. Thank you for being here with us tonight. They work very, very tirelessly in this work that we've been in for five years almost. And we hope that we are shedding more of a light in what good governance can and should look like in Houston ISD. Now, without any further ado, oh, actually, there is a little bit more further ado. I want to also acknowledge the League of Women Voters. And all I had to see was a Register to Vote Here sign to remember that they have joined us this evening. If you are not registered to vote, please see those folks over there. If you know people who aren't registered to vote, you can talk to them, and they can tell you exactly how you can get folks registered to vote. So please make sure that you visit the League of Women Voters, who are set up registering people tonight. Now, without any further ado, I do want our candidates to introduce themselves. Our candidates will come up, and because they each have two minutes, we'll have the capacity to sanitize the microphones in between them, so they will have the opportunity, should they choose, to introduce themselves unmasked and then return their masks on. But the candidates will each have two minutes to introduce themselves. And then we will have two panels this evening. The first panel with Districts 1, 7, and 9, and the second panel with Districts 5 and 6. So as I mentioned, we'll have the candidates come up for two-minute introductions. Our first, oh, and please hold your applause between candidates. I know we're very excited. However, as I mentioned, there are 15 of them. So with two minutes each, we've got to keep it moving. So if you'd like, you can do the Hattie Mae White ASL sign for applause in the air. However, we do ask that you not hold any sounding applause. Thanks. Candidates for District 1.
Before I give my introduction, I want to thank Houston GPS for having me here today. I'm happy to see democracy in action. I'm on this stage today, who is like many students in District 1. I'm a son of Latino immigrants. I'm at an age where I feel like I can give back to the community where I grew up in, as well as relating to the students in the district. Speaking of age, as some of you may know, the requirements for running for district office is to be a resident of the district and to be at least 18 years of age. I blessed that by seven years, and if elected, eight. I may be young, but I'm an active community participant. I'm part of the Houston Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Society of Patrolroom Engineers, the Society of Hispanic Professional Engineers, the Chevron Hispanic Society, and I was elected as an officer as a site lead for the Chevron Millennial Society. I'm a proud product of HISD Neighborhood Schools. I attended Herod Elementary. My music skills were honed in the piano and band programs at Meyer and PVA Middle School. At Baller High School, I flourished. I was a participant on the football team, soccer team, and swim team. I became fluent in French and participated in honor society. My high school experience made me feel like the educators wanted what was best for me. HISD's high quality of education prepared me for University of Texas at Austin. This was the hardest four years of my life because as a full-time engineering student, I was also working three part-time jobs to pay my way through school and for housing, while remaining an active member of the community. These experiences enabled me to step into an engineering role at Chevron and become an active member of the organizations. If elected, a question I will ask myself before making any decisions is, what is best for kids? Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I hardly need the mic. I'm pretty loud. Juneco is Lindner, and I'm running for District 1 trustee. Wonderful to see you all tonight, and hello. Buenas noches a todos mis amigos de Latinos for Education. So I am a mother of two children in HISD, and I'm a wife. I'm a full-time consultant. And the reason I am running is because when my children joined HISD and we were looking for the best schools, we found the best school in our neighborhood for our kids. And we also found schools that were not the best schools for our kids, and I could not let that go. The fact that there were children in a school that was not good enough for my kids led me to this path that I'm on today, to see you all here. And thank you so much. My path started in South Texas in Brownsville, where I was adopted by a widow who left school in second grade and never learned to read. So I know a lot of the challenges that many of our children are growing up with. And I know that my public school education and the excellent teachers that I had were the most significant thing that helped me get where I am today. I'm absolutely lucky in the best to have the opportunities that I have, and I feel compelled to bring those skills and talents in my work, in my involvement in Arts Connect Houston and Latinos for Education. Recently just won an award with the Houston Business Journal for all of my work in professional and volunteer activities. So I'm really proud to say that I bring the experience that's needed in this role. As your trustee, I will bring that professionalism and apply my focus and dedication that's needed to improve our student outcomes and make sure that every single school in this district is good enough for all of our children. I ask for your support, and I appreciate all your time. Thank you for your attention. Good evening. Buenas noches. Thank you first and foremost to Houston GPS for having us here tonight. Secondly, I want to thank the parents. Gracias a los padres por estar aquí esta noche. Los honro a nuestros estudiantes, a nuestras familias en el distrito. So I am Elizabeth Santos, but before, I'm a trustee. I'm trustee Santos, and the only reason I can call myself trustee Santos is because of our Student Parent Teacher and Community Driven Campaign that we launched four years ago. I have remained committed and focused and entirely embedded in the outcomes of our students. First, I was a student in District 1. Then I was a volunteer in District 1. I became a 10-year veteran teacher in our District 1 schools, and now I've represented HISD in the District 1 position and completely and utterly focused on students. In this time, I have championed policies that have increased teacher pay on average by $6,000. I have championed a living wage for our support staff and personnel, which we could not do without inside of schools, from $12 to $14. And it is the highest living wage, the highest increase that our support staff has ever seen in HISD history. But first and foremost, and I'm going to thank my colleagues that are here tonight, we have fought for democracy. We have had our democratically-elected school board threatened. We have had an executive order, mask mandate, and now so many more shenanigans going on. But this board has been democracy in action. We have remained focused and committed to our students, to our communities, to our parents. And the only reason I can call myself trustee Santos is because of every one of you here tonight or those that were in our community that got me to where I am today because of you, and I've remained committed to you. So thank you so much. Have a good evening.
District 5 trustees, or I'm sorry, candidates.
GPS, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Maria Benzon, and I'm asking for your support as I work to become the next HISD School Board trustee for District 5. There are four facts I want to share about my qualifications. Number one, I am an experienced school administrator and teacher. I have worked in communities of color and Spanish-speaking communities. I started teaching at Wheatley Middle School in San Antonio ISD. I taught also at Dowling Middle School, now Lawson Middle School, and in Madison High School as a math specialist. Currently, I'm working as an assistant principal at residential treatment centers, and I have also been an assistant principal in the Gulf Town area. Secondly, I'm involved as an HISD parent and community leader. This past year, during the pandemic, I was a room parent. How do you do that? Well, who did? I'm also on Girl Scouts with my child. I was a troop co-leader again during the pandemic. That's been tough. I'm also, and have been, in Baller Young Mothers, which is a lovely little organization. I've been president of that, trying to keep our community together and our family supported. Number three, I have a background as an educational researcher and a professor of teachers. I have a master's. In my master's program, I worked on heterosexism and homophobia in schools. I have a doctorate in educational psychology with a focus in racial, ethnic identity, student motivation, and academic outcomes. My dissertation was on teachers' beliefs about student motivation and how that relates to classroom instruction. And four, I am a graduate of awesome schools like Booker T. Washington, the University of Houston, and UT Austin. I stand before you on three main issues. One, equity and justice. Every student deserves high-quality education, and many Black and Hispanic kids do not have access to exceptional academic learning. Two, I'm minimizing emphasis on high-stakes testing. And three, that teachers and staff need to increase their pay. I know we need to do this together, and I ask for your support because together we are one. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I am Sue Diggard, and I am the incumbent trustee for District 5. I am grounded in a deeply-held belief that there is nothing more important for the future of our society, our economy, and our democracy than ensuring that every student has access to a high-quality public education. When I was sworn in to the board in 2018, the board was mired in dysfunction. This is not a deeply-held secret to anybody who reads the paper. Our district was adrift. But in January of 2020, my colleagues entrusted me with their vote and made me board president. And during that year, while we grappled with the challenges of COVID, I led the board in working together to bring stability to HISD. We did this by establishing a firmer foundation of good governance and by hiring a permanent superintendent. Today, the district is no longer adrift. Our children are now wrestling with unparalleled challenges due to the disruption in learning caused by COVID. Both here in HISD, as well as nationally, preliminary data tells us that our students have fallen behind in key areas such as literacy and that the achievement gap is actually grown. It is important that the students of District 5 have a leader that has experienced and has demonstrated success in leading a large education system to a better place, even during challenging times. And when I am re-elected this fall, I will continue to build on that foundation and to make it even stronger so that our students not only can overcome the challenges, but so that they can go on to achieve the greatest ambitions. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Caroline Walter, and I apologize, I am not an avid public speaker. But I feel like it's very important for me to take this position and run for this board position. A little about me, I was born and raised in northern New Jersey. I went to college at Eastern Michigan University, where I met my husband Kevin. We've been married for 15 years. And we moved to Houston in 2006, when he was signed by the Houston Texans as a wide receiver. He played for the Houston Texans for seven years and retired in about 2013. And after that, we decided to make Houston home. We could have gone back to our roots where we were from, but we love this city. We still love this city. We love the people. We love everything about it. We went on to have three amazing children, ages 11, 9, and 6 right now. And they are the reason that I am in this position right now, running for trustee. I am not a politician. I don't want to be a politician. I am a mom. I am you, and I am you, and I'm you. I'm all of you. I'm smart, and I'm open-minded, but I'm not a pushover. If there is something going on that I believe strongly in and something is not in the best interest of these kids, I'm going to stand up for it, even if that means standing alone. And I will fight, and I will not waver, and I will go on, and I will win. These kids are our future, and I don't see anything more important than fighting for them. The current board, in my opinion, with all the respect for the time that they have put in, is failing our kids. I see a lot of drama. I see a lot of politics, and I see a lot of negativity. And I...
Sorry. Your two minutes is up. Thank you. Don't worry, you have more time. District 6.
Good evening. I want to pause for just 10 seconds for the 12 soldiers who passed away today. My name is Dr. Kendall Baker, Houston native, and I'm running for District 6. I'm born and raised in Houston, Texas, a son of a pastor, a brother of six siblings. I have 30 years of management experience with the city of Houston. Most of you maybe remember my voice. Thank you for calling the 311 helpline. But I'm running for district, for the district, because the district is in need of dire change. For too long, the district has been a graveyard for politicians looking for an opportunity. I'm not an opportunist. I'm not a career politician. I plan to serve a term and train up the next person to continue on. What happened to the days when people, regular people of community, can run the district? Our district now is full of drama, as the last person said. The TEA is threatening to take over. I have a five-year-old in elementary school right now. I want her to be raised in the right way. I want to strengthen her curriculum. I want to be transparent with the budget. I have a lot of plans. And of course, you're going to hear better remarks from those who've been there for four years. But let's get back to the days when we passed a baton and let the regular neighborhood guy, even if he's a preacher, run for the district. I love children. I'm devoted to my child, and I want to share the same love and devotion to all the children of the district, not just of my race, but all races. In my district, we have a leader that has never stepped a foot in a Black school. And that's unfair to our people. I'm Kendall Baker.
Good evening. My name is Greg Degutter, and you can hear some different comments from me than what you're used to hearing. On April 6 of last year, my three-year-old was in the intensive care unit at Texas Children's Hospital. At 3 o'clock, I'm making a phone call to my wife to figure out what the heck is going on. Alarm blare, and she screams, "He's dead. Get to the hospital." Now, they were able to revive him, and minus a few amputations, we did get to take him home. But we didn't get to take home the child she was carrying at the time. You go through an event like that, and that's enough to make you decide, I need to get off the sidelines and actually put my thoughts and my beliefs into action in the community. A lot of people here have talked about their credentials. If you want my credentials, I'm an attorney. I used to be a meteorologist. I'm a disability attorney. I run a nonprofit to help disabled, to help expectant mothers with disabled children get social security disability when their child is born and to help disabled children get on the Medicaid binder program. This race, I have just a fundamentally different vision than what everyone else has. And at the end of the day, that's what we need to think about. Everyone has a different vision, and whose vision is going to best serve the students? My vision doesn't care about the achievement gap. It's terrible. It needs to be addressed. But my vision deals with maximizing student potential. When I look at my three children, my three-year-old has Down Syndrome, no large intestine, the amputations, non-verbal. He's got a different capacity than my two twins, one of which is in normal health and one of which has an extra bone in the skull growing into his brain. Three different values, three different potentials. Each one needs their own individual help.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much, Houston GPS, for all of your work in supporting good governance and advocating for a positive, strong public school system here in Houston. I appreciate your time this evening. A little bit about my background. I'm a first-generation college graduate, a former educator, a nonprofit leader, and I currently work for a Fortune 100 company. I've had the opportunity to serve on the board for the last four and a half years. And when I first stepped into this role, there was already a conservator in the district. We became a recaptured district, sending tens of millions of dollars back to the state. Hurricane Harvey happened that same year in 2017. We have state presence and pressure, a looming takeover. We've had the pandemic going on for a year and a half, and we also had the freeze on top of it. We have gone through a tremendous, hard experience and hardships, and we have persisted as a district. We work together collaboratively with our colleagues, and what we've accomplished are some of the following. Just a few snippets I'd like to share with you. We've implemented a governance framework, Lone Star Governance, since I first came on back in 2017. We've had the opportunity to lower the number of improvement-required schools across the district. We've invested more dollars in special education and also HISD personnel. We've also strengthened the audit function and encouraged the LBB to provide us objective feedback so that we can have a more resilient, stronger organization as a result of it. We've done all of this while maintaining the current tax rate. All right? The top priorities that we have right now are first and foremost our students and having a successful school year for 2021. We need to make sure that our students are back in the classrooms safe and sound and that our teachers are supporting them and feel safe as well.
Thank you. That is two minutes. Before we move to our District 7 candidates, I do want to note that there are open seats on this side of the room. If those who are standing close to the window, yes, it is cooler on this side of the room. If you would like to move over here, that's fine. You can also stay standing. It is your choice. But I did want folks to know that there are open seats on this side of the room. District 7.
Good afternoon. My name is Judge Dwight Jefferson. I am a candidate for District 7. First, I'd like to thank GPS for hosting this event tonight. And secondly, I'd like to thank all of the concerned citizens who have shown up here this evening to listen to us candidates speak. My background is in law. I'm former state district judge, and I'm a practicing attorney. The theme of my campaign has been experienced leadership and proven results. I've served as a judge of the district court. I've served as a member of the Metro Board of Directors, where I chair the finance committee. I've served as the chairman of the Houston Chapter of the American Diabetes Association. And I have also served Mayor Parker on her transition team in selecting the presiding judge of the municipal courts. Why am I running? I had the opportunity to serve on the HEAR Committee, which is a volunteer committee. In 2019, I went to Austin to lobby the legislature on behalf of HISD's legislative agenda. We were successful in that regard in reducing recapture, bringing back an additional $700 million in capture funds to Houston, and $100 million for raising, for teacher raises, and also for pre-K. My goal in this election, and if I serve on the Board of Directors, is to work on the COVID losses and...
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Anne Sung. I'm a mom. I'm a Harvard-trained policy analyst and a former Turnaround Science Department Chair. I ran for this board to help all students succeed. And I know to do that, we need to change systems in HISD. I want to give you four examples of systems change I have helped to lead on this board. One, impact. When I joined the board, HISD lacked student learning goals. So in 2017, and again in 2020, I worked with my colleagues in the administration to adopt goals for early literacy, early math. to adopt goals for early literacy, early math, college and career readiness, and special education. Today, everything aligns to these goals. We'll progress monitoring monthly, the superintendent evaluation, and our budget. Number two, stewardship. When I joined the board, the Audit Department was defunct. So we hired a C A E. We rebuilt our Audit Committee and commissioned an external audit from the Legislative Budget Board. Today, the Audit Committee is thriving. The Audit Department has received the highest assessment by the I I A, and we've saved the district six point seven million dollars. Three, equity. When I joined the board, H I S D had ten multi-year I R schools. So we rolled out Achieve One Eighty, wraparound services, and added twenty-six point five million dollars to school budgets as an equitable P U A multiplier. Results, in twenty nineteen, nine of those ten schools exited I R, and we really would have made it to without the pandemic. Four, leadership and collaboration. When I joined the board, meetings were disorganized. As a teacher, I know good systems support high-functioning classrooms or boardrooms. So we revamped how the board meeting preparations work and wrote a board operating procedures manual. Now board meetings run smoothly and with transparency. Today, the H I S D board and Superintendent House, who we hired by unanimous vote, are a team of ten pulling together for our kids. I humbly ask for your endorsement so I can continue to support Superintendent House's success.
Thank you, Houston G P S and everybody in attendance. My name is Mac Walker. I'm a native Houstonian, come from a low-income household where it was rife with alcoholism, heroin addiction, crime, drugs, you name it, and we were constantly on the move from one place to another. So I know what that's like for a lot of kids in H I S D. With the help of some great teachers and coaches, I was the first in my family to graduate high school. Graduated from Sharpstown High School, tied for number one in my class, went on to Duke University, where I got my degree in mechanical engineering. Uh, later got an M B A from the University of Texas. And today, my wife and I are settled down. We've got three school-aged children who spent a total of fifteen years in H I S D, and we're counting still. Uh, I own a small business that I operate. I'm active on my school's P T O as an executive member, where I've served for six years. I can tell you from a, as a parent on the front lines, H I S D has some major issues that need to be addressed. The reason I am running is because I'm bringing financial and operational expertise that the board lacks. The time is now. We have a new superintendent, Millard House, promises bold change, but he needs a bold board to act with him, one that has integrity and some kind of expertise in finance and operations. I do not have all the answers, but I know how to listen and learn. And it's, uh, the integrity issue is, is important to me. My only aspiration is to put children first. I don't have any ties to unions. I don't have any ties to, uh, city government. I have no future aspirations. It's simply make that, the H I S D a great, high-functioning organization. Three things I'd like to do. Get great teachers in every classroom, raise the P U A so that schools have the resources they need, and balance a budget for once. It's been five years. The current board's failed on all three accounts, and if you think it's time for a change, I'm your candidate. Thank you for your support.
District Nine.
Good evening. I am Myrna Guidry. I am the incumbent trustee of District Nine. Let me just say, since being appointed to the board about eight months ago, I have had an awesome, uh, time connecting, um, with the students, the parents, the teachers, and most of all, my colleagues, as we, uh, forged ahead, trying to make sure that we kept our students safe, that we got them into school, and that we provided for them all of the things they need in order to get back into school safely. I am a wife, a mother of a recent H I S D, I smile for that, recent, uh, recent H I S D graduate who is now in her first year of college. I am an attorney, and I am an mediator. I'm also a, an adjunct professor at Thurgood Marshall School of Law. As a mediator, I think I am most suited for this position because it takes that in order to collaborate with a team of ten. As a team of ten, we have done some great things together. And one of the things, I'm so glad trustee Santos brought it up, was the teacher, um, increase. Now, did I ask the hard question? Yes, I did. And if you all don't expect me to ask the hard questions, I'm sorry. That's what we do. But at the end of the day, we passed the teacher increase. At the end of the day, we got it done. I would love to continue to do the work that we started, and I'm asking that you all would vote for me. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Gary Monroe. Let's stop. Let's, I, I got a number in my head. It's ten, ten. I've been an education advocate for ten years, and I'm probably the best in the state of Texas. Ten years ago, when I came, we were talking about teacher raises. How long we gonna kick that can down the road? Ten years ago, we were talking about equity. How long we gonna kick that can down the road? Let me explain something to you. Right now, I'm in college my senior year because your children challenged me. They would not allow me to mentor them anymore unless I went back to college. You're giving them twenty-first century learning. I'm on the dean's list, walking circles around your kids in these classrooms. Something's wrong. Everything rises and falls on leadership. Every person on the board needs to understand one thing. We can be like David Ruffin and Otis Williams of the Temptations. We don't have to like each other. We just need to sing together for these kids. I'm pro-parent. I believe my parents should have a voice. Two years ago, they tried to silence me, and I went to federal court, and I stood up for my constitutional rights. So if you have a problem with a mask, don't get mad at a parent that don't know to wear one. And that's what it boils down to. The failure falls on the leadership. Stop standing up here acting like this district is all that, when in all actuality, we the worst in the state of Texas.
Elected officials, Dr. Jenkins, Houston G P S, members of the community. Good evening. Buenos dias. My name is Joshua Ryan Rosales. I'm a candidate for H I S D District Nine. I've been in the district now for six years, and I was born and raised in Lake Jackson, Texas, just down the road from Houston. So I've been in Houston area my whole life. I went to school in Chicago. I lived in another great big city, but this is a world-class city. We want to make it even better. So to have a, basically, a world-class city, we need to have a world-class education system. I'm a first-generation American. My parents are from Guatemala. And the last two years, I've dedicated my time entirely to Hobby P T O Elementary, uh, as, as a president, working there on a micro level. My goal now is to take the work that we're doing on the micro level, take it to the micro level, uh, uh, not only across District Nine, but also for H I, H I S D. Like I said, building equity is super important, having good leadership. I believe I have that skill set. You can learn more about my resume, joshuarrosalesforhisdnine.com. But really, my campaign is based on four points. Number one is students, putting students and teachers first. You can learn more about my platform, but that's going to be a number one priority. Number two, make H I S D more efficient. It's unacceptable, the status quo. We cannot continue to have that. Number three, a world-class education for a world-class city. It cannot be a world-class city without a world-class education. And number four, we need to increase District Nine investment. District Nine has been neglected for way too long, for too many years, and we need someone to stand up and really fight for District Nine and make it more relevant for H I S D. Our schools are falling apart. I'm walking it every day, and like I said, the status quo cannot continue. I believe I represent all the qualities for Houston G P S. So today, I'm asking for your endorsement from the members. So thank you very much, joshuarrosalesforhisdnine.com. I look forward to seeing you in the community and trying to make a difference for our kids. I have two kids in H I S D Elementary, trying to make a difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now, let's have a round of applause for all of our candidates. Thank you all so much. At this point in time, we will have our first panel. Our first panel includes the nine candidates running for seats in Districts One, Seven, and Nine. Candidates, you can come forward. There should be nine seats. As the candidates are taking their seats, I would like to let the audience know that if you have an additional question, at the end, we will have time for Q and A. However, due to the limited number of microphones, we'll need you to write your question down in English or in Spanish on a note card, and it will be passed to the front. So, uh, if you have a question, at any point in the evening, just throw your hand in the air. One of our Houston G P S volunteers will bring you a note card to write down your question, and then you can hold the note card up, grab it, and bring it to the front at any point in the evening. I've already informed the candidates, uh, I've already informed the candidates that... Are we good? Okay. So it's, yeah, One, Seven, and Nine. Okay, we're good. Well, they're not quoted in order, but that's totally fine. Everybody's got at least some sort of access to a microphone. I've already informed the candidates that tonight, they will each get two questions. The first question that each candidate gets has been tailor-made for them. I've also let them know that I'm referring to this question as the tough love section. This is more of an accountability-style question. It is longer in form, and as a result, each candidate will get one minute to respond. I do want to acknowledge that it's true that trustees, currently sitting trustees, who have a much longer public record, um, that they, that their question could be pulled from. And candidates don't really have as much experience. However, these questions will be very detailed in nature. So I will ask the question, and each candidate will have one minute to respond. And at the end of that, they will get a shorter question that would be common for all candidates running in a race. We are not going to do this in numerical order. I tried to switch it up so it's not the same person going first every single time. And so, uh, we're going to get started. Once again, should you want to respond, we do ask that you do that in a way that does not make sound and is not verbal. We're going to start with District Nine. Ms. Guidry, Houston's South Side has a rich history as a significant part of African-American culture in Texas and in the United States. Demographic shifts in that part of town cannot be ignored, however, and are evidenced in the fact that Madison and Westbury High School, high schools, each now have over sixty percent Latino student populations. It is incumbent on our leaders to acknowledge lines of difference and address the unique needs of various student populations. We'd like to know which specific Latino community leaders do you seek out for guidance, advice, and/or collaboration in your part of the city? And what has resulted from your collaborative efforts?
Well, let me just say that I do appreciate the fact of the change in dynamics in demographics since, in District Nine. Uh, I have, uh, as I was speaking to the Latino mothers, uh, earlier, I have a Latino legal assistant who has been with me almost twenty years now. Um, she is my direct contact and connection throughout the, the district. But additionally, my goal is to make sure that everyone is informed, and all of my robo calls are both Hispanic and English. All of my literature that has gone out is also both Hispanic and English. And I open up my, um, office, uh, and this is why I do maintain on my staff someone who can, uh, communicate effectively with our Latino friends and, uh, parents and community organizations. Thank you.
Mr. Monroe, you and I have known each other in this space for years now. We have been on the same side and on opposite sides of various issues. I want to acknowledge that in several conversations, you have shown yourself to be knowledgeable and passionate. However, I have also seen your advocacy take turns that can only be described as bombastic and distracting. And I want to be clear that I'm not just talking about costumes or impassioned speeches. Some of your displays have included direct threats and incredibly vulgar, targeted language. How can we trust that you will make a clear and consistent shift to operating as part of a functional governing body? Give one minute.
You asked the same question that the federal judge asked me. That kid at Bell Out that died. The reason I got banned from the school district is because I was in heated discussions with them all week about a substitute teacher with a gun in her purse. I go to bat for these kids, even from my hospital bed. What you have to do right now is understand one thing. I'm never angry. I'm passionate. I'm passionate. I need these kids to succeed. They don't need to work in no, in, in, in no factories. They need to learn how to run their own companies. So can you trust me? Of course you can. Trust me like Minneapolis did. I'm the reason them riots stopped. Somebody listen to me.
Okay. Mr. Rosales. So this is the, the one question that I said would be similar to you all. Houston's South Side has a long, rich history as a significant part of African-American culture in Texas and in the United States. Despite demographic shifts in that part of town, there is still a vibrant, active, and thriving Black community, as evidenced by Worthing and South Early College High Schools having majority African-American student populations. It is incumbent upon our leaders to acknowledge lines of difference and address the unique needs of various student populations. Which specific African-American community leaders do you seek out for guidance, advice, and/or collaboration opportunities in your part of the city? And what has resulted from your collaborative efforts?
Thank you for that question. That's a really great question. You know, I, I, I come from Hobby Elementary Dual Language Academy, which is literally one of the most, uh, Black and Hispanic schools in all of District Nine. I've walked many of the schools recently. A lot of them are majority Hispanic with a smaller Black population. Hobby Elementary is one of the most rich, history, uh, elementary schools in our district. I've been fortunate to be P T O president for the last two years, working there on the ground, really making a difference for our Black and Hispanic families and students. That's why I'm running, because they encourage me, they motivate me, they're behind me. You go to Hobby Elementary and ask anyone, you mention my name, they're going to tell you exactly what I've done and how we made it better. In terms of leaders, we have Ms. Carol Washington. We have Ms. Drew Thornton, Ms. Carolyn Washington. We also have Dr. Shakima Carmack-Williams, a professor at U of H. All of them have served next to me. We walk side by side, and they have publicly endorsed me as candidate for District Nine. And like I said, I have a lot of rich, uh, understanding, and that's who I'm leaning on.
Thank you. We'll now move to District One. Mr. Kapinski, in your questionnaire, and I mentioned again to the candidates, Houston G P S members do have access to the candidate questionnaires. The general public does not, so I will give a little bit of background about one of your policy statements. In your questionnaire, you disagreed with the statement that quantitative student outcome data is required to adequately set and measure progress toward district goals. Without student data, how do you expect to set broad goals for student learning and measure progress?
Thank you for the question. I've always thought that standardized testing has been a little bit too overbearing in the district. There have been several interviews, uh, done in the previous election cycle by, uh, candidates that have stated that they would, uh, decrease the number of standardized testing that we, as a district, would have to do. Growing up, I grew up in a house... Growing up, I grew up in a household of educators. My grandmother worked at McNamara Elementary for over 10 years. My mother was HIS employee for over 25 years. So I was around this. I saw the standardized testing take over the district. So I just want you all to know that I've been in education for many years. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Garcia-Lindner, and I do want to assure everyone that I actually have not, did not set this up in the way I had no idea what candidates would respond to. But that was actually an interesting segue. At multiple points in your questionnaire, you referenced the 50 D or F-rated schools in Houston ISD. While we are committed to using actual data at Houston GPS, we must acknowledge that the push for greater accountability has led to pressure, overtesting, and toxic environments in too many schools. How can you ensure that your calls for accountability won't simply lead to constant testing just for the sake of testing?
Thank you. It's unfortunate that that is what it's led to in some cases. What I know is that it's not all cases, because that doesn't happen at our school, because there's great leadership and there are great teachers who know that a test is just one measure at one point in time of how a student is doing. We cannot manage what we don't measure. So we need some marks to know where our students are and where they're going to go, what the goals are. Now, to suggest that we test the heck out of our kids is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that we have to measure, but we also have to balance that. And any case where we're seeing an overemphasis on testing, to me, is a case where we have a lack of great leadership and great teachers and staff and principals to understand that that's not what testing is about. Testing is just a point-in-time mark. We need to have a baseline to achieve our goals.
Thank you. Shifting gears, Ms. Santos. On your questionnaire, you strongly disagreed with the statement that Houston ISD should partner with vetted external organizations to improve or maintain school performance and specialized programs in the district. I should point out that North Early College High School in North Line is an example of one such partnership already in existence. I assume, and you can feel free to correct me, that you reject that option for partnerships because one example included the word charter. I should also point out that over 12,000 HIS students attend external contract schools. They are fully part of district enrollment and funded as such. And tens of thousands more attend in-district charters and partnered schools like North Early College. Given that your rejection of this particular choice in public education actually led you to vote against increased oversight and regulation of charter operators at first reading, how do you justify this anti-charter stance, no matter what, as anything more than political rhetoric?
Thank you for that question. Dr. Jenkins, I will say that I believe that I was the one that implemented that, not, I'm sorry, that brought that policy forward for stronger audit oversight over charter schools in district, or in district charter schools. So first, let me answer the question. North Houston Early College is an incredible school, and one in which I am actively part of the student organization dialogue. But North Houston Early College is a... It's a Burbank, it's a higher Burbank Middle School, but Burbank Middle School is a Vanguard School. What happens is when you have our talent being drained from Burbank into North Houston and leaving droughts of... At San Houston High School, there is no... What I'm saying is North Houston Early College should have been put in San Houston High School so that San Houston would not have gone into F-rating and was reconstituted by the state.
I believe your last words were, "and was reconstituted by the state."
Right, but if North Houston had been put there, that wouldn't have happened.
Okay. I did want to give you a chance to finish that sentence. We're going to move to District Seven. Judge Jefferson, in your questionnaire, you extensively discuss your involvement in the previous $750 million metro bond allocation. Given the very recent FBI investigation into financial improprieties in district operations and the myriad concerns in the allocation of funds after any bond election, how, what specific measures can you offer to ensure that your former contacts will not seek any undue influence in any upcoming HIS bond and that funds will be spent with equity and integrity?
Well, the first thing I would say is that there must be complete transparency in the process of the selection of firms that would handle bonds. I think with that type of transparency, you give the public an opportunity to be able to clearly see what the process is, how it's taking place, and to ensure that there is no type of improper participation or improper influence that is involved. And so I think strict enforcement of the board policies, as well as the state rules and laws with regard to public finances, is of the ultimate importance in ensuring the insurance, of ensuring the integrity of the process of bond issuance and public funding.
Thank you. Ms. Song. Across the 2016 and 2017 election cycles, you accepted over $37,000 in campaign donations from HFT Cope and had over $36,000 spent on your behalf by the Texas Federation of Teachers PAC, Houston United for Strong Public Schools. This is a total of over $73,000 from the HFT and its affiliates. In 2019, you then went on to approve a policy that effectively named HFT as the only teacher-representing employee organization with contract bargaining power, despite the existence of other teachers' unions in the district. Now, you are not the only trustee to have accepted donations from these organizations. Indeed, we have co-endorsed many HFT-endorsed candidates and also donated funds. Nor are you the only one to have approved that policy. You are, however, the only one who later claimed that receiving money from Leadership for Educational Equity precluded you from voting on the Teach for America contract, stating that you needed to avoid conflicts of interest or the appearance of conflicts of interest. How do you reconcile this inconsistent application of board policy?
Thank you for the question. So first, I'll point out that, you know, I have received campaign contributions from a diversity of sources, but I have often rejected checks whenever I have felt that, you know, the checks would come with strings attached. So I have never felt that in the case of any of the checks that I've received, and because my campaign donations come from a diversity of sources, the checks that you point out are like 20 to 30% of my campaign budget. With regards to board policy, that policy is specifically with regards to contracts. So where the district is contracting with an organization. And in the case of Teach for America, that is a contract that is made. And so that's why I've applied that standard. You know, the question that you raised has never been brought before me. So it's something I'll give some consideration to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, you have an impressive background and a compelling story. That said, your background does not include experience working in education. While I can appreciate your statements about increasing teacher pay, they are, quite frankly, things that we've heard from all candidates. How do you plan to make good on the promise to meaningfully increase teacher pay? And how can we hold you accountable to that?
Like any business, you start by looking at revenues and expenses. On the revenue side, HIS has lost 10% of its students over the last five years. That's 20,000 students. Does that mean that we are leaving $200 million annually on the table? You know, I don't know enough recapture, but I would certainly be asking that question. Secondly, I would look at the budgeting process each year. Each of the last five years, the board has passed a deficit, but yet they're routinely getting surpluses at the end of the year. What's, either they don't know their numbers, or there's a severe flaw in the process. And it's important, because it leads to bad decisions. Like, hey, let's cut the PUA, or let's not give teachers raises, because they don't know their numbers or the process is flawed. And finally, if it comes down to cutting expenses, I would look at recommendations from the Legislative Budget Board's most recent audit. There's a $2 billion budget. There's got to be room to get more bang for your buck. I truly believe that.
Again, this is a good segue to our 30-second questions. So these are the 30-second questions. They will be different for each district. District Nine candidates, and we'll go in the same order. You've got 30 seconds each. What are your top three policy priorities? Ms. Guidry.
My top three priority, policy priorities would be to make sure that every child is successful. We have right now the Black and Brown. We have the gap. We have got to increase that gap. I'm sorry, reduce the gap between the Black and Brown students and other students. My other priority would be, of course, teacher raises, teacher incentives. The other one would be to make sure that there is accountability on every level and...
That is your time. Mr. Monroe.
Same question.
Same question. What are your top three policy priorities?
We're the biggest school district in the state of Texas. I don't know how a first-year teacher does not make $70,000. I believe a first-year teacher should make $70,000. And it's easy to get there, because if we stop playing the game of procurement, where we got caught up with the feds, we'd have money. If we get rid of the SSO positions that we don't need...
You have 10 seconds left.
Also, we have to fix special ed. We have to get into compliance with special ed. And lastly, just take care of all the kids.
Okay, Mr. Rosales, same question. Top three policy priorities. I think he's...
The number one priority is going to be putting students and teachers first and giving our students a world-class education, like I said earlier. Number two is making HIS more efficient. We're spending 80% on operations, 20% on everything else. We need to really make it more efficient. And like I said, go back, put our students and teachers first, campus needs. Number three, we need to bring more investment to District Nine. Not only HIS, the money's there. Where there's a will, there's a way. But it's also working across all public agencies to bring more District Nine investment in and out of school. Those are the three priorities.
District One, you have a different set of questions. Everyone wants to pay teachers better. We've heard that mentioned multiple times, and I don't disagree. However, where can the money come from? Mr. Kapinski, your first, 30 seconds.
Well, I don't have all the answers for you today. I do know that I'm not beholden to any sponsors or outside groups and won't take any schools into consideration. So I'll strive my best to come up with the answers for you. We have an executive glut at the top, and teachers could be paid more that way. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia-Lindner. Sorry. Sure. Everyone wants to pay teachers, HIS teachers better. Where can the money come from?
Thank you. One significant way where we can give our schools the option of solving the problems at their local, for their local communities is to move money from centralized office, central office, to the local schools. So that PUA is a very important thing to make sure that we raise, to make sure that we get enough money for our students to the schools, but also really moving that centralized funding out to the local control. Thank you.
And Ms. Santos, same question. Where will the money come from?
Thank you. In June, I proposed a budget amendment that brought our teacher average salary up, I'm sorry, our salary up by $2,500. That, $23 million more dollars would get us to be in the competitive paying districts, surrounding districts for HIS. We'd find this in the LBB that I helped pass in March 2018, where we audited our finances. It would come from facilities contracts that we no longer need or use because of the new beautiful buildings that we have. It would come from fallout that we have every year, left over every year. So $23 million.
That is your time. District Seven, 30 seconds each. Your question is, how can the district ensure, not just improve, but ensure, parent and family engagement? How can the district ensure parent and family engagement? Judge Jefferson, you're first.
Well, that's a tough question. How can we ensure that the parents are involved? Well, I mean, the first way we can do that is if we paid the parents to come and participate and be involved, then that's one way where definitely we could ensure that the parents were there if we had that financial incentive for them to take part in it. Outside of that, we just have to work hard with our wraparound programs and get into the community and engage.
That's your time. Ms. Song, how can you ensure parent better, parent and family engagement?
We currently in HIS have a process to certify schools as family-friendly. One of the things they do is support PTO development. But I think we need to look at schools that engage families in other ways, through coffees, through bilingual programming, and replicate those. Finally, I'd like to see the board also create a structured way to engage parents and families in our work.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, same question.
I think if parents knew what was going on in HIS and how bad it is, this room would be packed. You wouldn't be able to fit everybody in here. So that means getting the word out, whether it's going to schools and speaking to PTOs, holding Zoom meetings, which Ann does a great job of, or whatever it takes. Get the word out. But when parents find out, and I talk to a lot of them, they don't really know what's going on. They don't even understand what a board does. They will get involved.
Thank you. We're trying to make our small chip in making sure that they do know what the board does. Thank you to these candidates. Let's give them all a round of applause. You all can take your seats. I do want to give them a little bit of time to clear the space, and I have more, I have questions coming in. Again, if you have a question, you can feel free to raise your hand for a note card. Write your question down on the note card. Hold it up. Someone will grab it, bring it to the front. We likely won't get to all questions, but some. Candidates for Districts Five and Six are already on the way up. Please feel free to come up. We do ask that you sit with the others running in your race. I do want to acknowledge that these candidates have had the benefit of seeing one round already. However, we will be sticking with the same format. So we will go ahead and start with our one-minute individual questions. Again, these questions have been formulated for each candidate separately. You each get one minute to respond. We will start with District Five. Dr. Pinson. In your questionnaire, you disagreed with the statement that parent and student feedback should play a role in teacher evaluations. Given the documented importance of home-to-school connection, why don't you think parent or family voice should be a part of determining how effective teachers are?
For that, thank you for that question. I believe that there's a lot that goes on in the schools. A lot of decisions have to be made. And as an assistant principal, there are a lot of things that go on that, that, that as an expert in the field, you make decisions. And from the outside, you don't always know all of the pieces that go, that need to happen in order for a school to run well. So I believe that you need to, that input is important, but the actually making and evaluating a teacher really needs to come from, from, from an administrator and from the team inside of the school.
Thank you. Ms. Diggard. As has been mentioned a few times in each of the last five budget cycles, four of which you have been a part of, the HISD Board has approved deficit budgets ranging from 15 to 107 million dollars. These budgets frequently include paying for recurring expenses like modest teacher salary increases from the fund balance account. While it is true that by the end of most years, the district does not spend all of the money allocated, why have we not reached a point of being able to adequately allocate annual expenditures, make necessary cuts, pay teachers better, and not leave money on the table?
That is an excellent question. I think that a large part of why this has happened over the last four years is the instability that the district has had with a lack of vision and a lack of a permanent superintendent. This has resulted, we have also had an interim chief financial officer. This has resulted in the budget not being prepared early enough and not being done in alignment with a strategic plan and to achieve the board's goals. So it is now my expectation, now that we have a new superintendent, that our, our budgets henceforth will not just be brought to us on an annual basis, but will be a longitudinal plan for our budget that will be aligned to achieving our goals, that will demonstrate the strategies to achieve those goals. And also would ideally begin with zero-based budgeting, that instead of tinkering around the edges every year to, to, to add things or take things away, that will start foundationally with, these are the things that we need and this is what we need, how we need to fund them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walter. On Thursday, August 12th, 2021, the Houston ISD School Board unanimously approved a resolution expressing support for the superintendent's decision to mandate the wearing of protective face masks by students, staff, and visitors while inside campuses, district facilities, and while riding on district buses. Would you have voted in favor of this resolution? Why or why not?
New way to get this question. I would 100% vote in favor, or not in favor of a mask mandate, and this is why. My thought on this has nothing to do with masks themselves or the ongoing debate on whether masks work or they don't work. It is not my place. In fact, I believe it is an overreach of the power of the board to make a decision whether you are putting a mask on a child's face or you're pulling a mask off a child's face. This is a health-related issue that I have, I, I should not have the ability to make for anybody. You shouldn't want me to. No matter where you stand on masks, you, you should want your own rights and your own decision-making process on something so serious. So I, I realize this is not the popular opinion, but right.
Okay, thank you. We are going to move to District Six. Dr. Baker. You outline your extensive history working for city government, and you have run for city office in the past, including a run for mayor in 2019. How can we be assured that this race is different? And what do you understand to be different about the role of a school board trustee from the other offices that you've sought?
Oh, this race is much easier than the mayoral race. My city experience gave me 30 years of dealing with 2.1 million citizens every year. I'm running because I have 25 years of volunteering with HMAC, Houston Ministers Against Crime in the School Systems, also with your former Southeast Advisory Board for years. So I do have knowledge. And my whole family grew up in the North Forest and HISD schools. I worked with several principals, which both with Sharpstown, with the formerly high school, and, and, and also North Forest High School that was changed over. So it'll be different, but it'll be much easier than my previous job. I'm retired and I'm an entrepreneur, so I have the time and availability to do so outside of raising my five-year-old.
Thank you. Mr. Diggard. In your questionnaire, you stated that you strongly disagreed with giving more funding to support students from traditionally underserved communities in excess of the current per-unit allocation and Title I funding. Given the number of students who indeed come from underserved communities in Houston ISD and this organization's commitment to equity, how do you explain this response? And how do you plan to address the inequities that exist in HISD?
Thank you. The reason why I strongly disagreed with the question isn't the sentiment behind it. I agree with the sentiment behind it is with the underlying premise to the question. Need knows no color. Need knows no location. Need exists based on need. Conventional wisdom isn't always accurate. I've helped over 4,500 people get disability benefits. The majority of those I've succeeded were African-Americans. You can count on your fingers the number of agents I've been able to successfully get disability benefits for. It's not that there's a difference in need, it's there's just the circumstances are, for some reason, it's more difficult. This is something that the money needs to go to where the need is, regardless of if the community is labeled as underserved, because need doesn't know the label. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Vila Sepe. On October 8th, 2018, you, along with trustees Lea, Sung, Santos, and Davila, met at a restaurant with Dr. Abe Savedra. And three days later, former trustee Davila made a motion to replace interim superintendent Granita Lathan with Dr. Savedra without review of the entire board. These events are not in dispute, doubt, or question, and they are very clearly outlined and confirmed by you and your colleagues in the TEA final investigation report published on October 30th, 2019. It is now up to the courts to decide whether or not the restaurant meeting amounted to a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And at this point, I am less interested in that legal question and more interested in knowing whether or not you think those actions were an example of good school board governance.
Thank you so much for this question. This decision that I made in that matter was something that I took on my own with limited information and context for some of the previous historical things that were going on in the district. At the time, I, I'm, it's a regrettable decision, you know? At the time, I was focused on superintendent search. And so I made that decision based on one trustee's interest in moving forward with superintendent search. But regrettable, it shouldn't have gone down like that. And I apologize.
Thank you. I do want to note that you still have 30 seconds left. She does not cut off. Okay. Let's go to our 30 second questions. They will be very similar to the ones at the top, except we will only ask two of those three. First, to the trustees from District Five, and we will go in the same order. Dr. Benson, what are your top three policy priorities? You have 30 seconds.
My first priority is equity. Every student deserves a high-quality education. And I've worked in those schools and I know how to help get those schools up. The other thing is less emphasis on high-stakes testing. I believe in performance-based assessments. I believe as a researcher, there are other ways to assess than just test scores. And the third thing is more pay for teachers, and we've discussed that a lot already, but not just teachers. I'm talking cafeteria workers and the people who support the schools as well.
Ms. Diggard, same question.
Thank you. First, identify our high-quality teachers and make sure that they are put in the classrooms with the students who need them most. To reform our PUA funding system, so it is more reflective and up-to-date of the, the current needs of our students, things like a hyper-poverty rate for our high-poverty schools, and also aligning the budget to a strategic plan to accomplish our goals for kids.
Finally, Ms. Walter.
I think the first priority for me would be to pay our teachers better. Without teachers, we have nothing. We need innovative teachers. We need teachers that want to be there. We don't need bodies. We want people that want to make a difference. And without the pay, they're not going to come. If we pay them well, they will come to us and they will make a difference in our schools. The second thing I, that I would prioritize was, is equity. And I think that is, there's tangible and intangible components. I think there is money to be spent. And I also think that there is a support system that needs to go in.
Okay. Finally, and because you all are, are the last segment to go, you will actually get a choice. Okay? Yes, a choice for our last three folks. Call it the spoils of, of going at the end. Your choice is, and you'll get 30 seconds no matter what. Either everyone wants to pay HISD teachers better, where can the money come from? Or how can the district ensure better parent or family engagement? And we'll start with Dr. Baker.
I'll take the second trust because I'm a people person and I've been living in my district for all my life, 35 years. And so I'm the type of person that gets to know you up close and in person. And so based on the last outcome of the last race, over by 7,000 votes, and my research, there are about, you know, 20, 30,000 families. I'm going to make sure I have a system in place to stay in contact with my parents and students. And then I'm going to share that idea with the board and see if they want to take it.
Okay. Mr. Diggard. Where will the money to pay teachers better come from? Or how can the district better ensure parent and family engagement?
I'll take the better pay question. HSD can work within the existing framework of Texas Education Code 48102. 48102 deals with the allocation per, per students. The, if you deal with the disabled population better, it brings in more money to the district. Also, HSD could charge Medicaid for services already provided. That's just an extra pair source they need to take advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you. We now invite all the candidates to come forward. You can bring your chairs with you or if you'd like to stand to the side. Those of you who are already seated can stay seated. All the candidates are going to come forward for question and answer. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness. Yes, you can still come forward, but my apologies. Ms. Vila Sepe, please go ahead and respond. Either parent engagement or how do we pay teachers better? You have 30 seconds.
We absolutely need to continue to pay our teachers better. We need to figure out a better way to scrub the budget. I know trustee Diggard mentioned a zero-based budgeting process. I am in agreement with that. There are lots of opportunities to increase efficiencies operationally across the district. The superintendent we just hired has plenty of experience in that area, and we're depending on him to come together to be able to do so. We also need to increase our enrollment in the district, make sure that students are in our classrooms, and that we're getting more students back to HISD.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies. All of our candidates, please come forward for the question portion. Okay. There is another seat on the side as well. It's now in the end. Someone wants to swivel around. And for those who will still be standing, if you could scoot in a little bit closer in behind the table. But yeah, the closer in we scoot, the better for those who are viewing via live stream. We'll start with a few of the note cards that we've received. One of the questions that I've gotten, and I will, I will direct this at three trustees. I'm going to go ahead and direct it, my apologies, three candidates. I'm going to go ahead and direct this at random, just so we don't have a go down the line with all 15 folks. And those who are interested in responding can raise your hands. Just please acknowledge that I will only be able to get to three, maybe four folks to answer this. We keep hearing about the increase of wages for teachers and the efforts to put in to achieve that. However, we have not heard of a plan to increase the quality of teachers, especially in lower-income areas. What is the plan to correct this? Okay, I saw these two hands first and then perhaps we'll get to another. So, Mr. Kowalski, if you could pass him the microphone. And I promise they'll hear you if you need to ask one.
Thank you. So one thing that does need to happen is the increase in stipend for supplies for teachers. They currently only get $50 for their supplies. That should be at least a couple hundred dollars. The fact that that has not been addressed over the past years, honestly, is, is a brain fart to me. So that's one way to attract higher-quality teachers is offering other benefits that are not necessarily salary-inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Garza-Lindner.
A critical change that needs to happen is we need to change the incentive for teachers to go to the, the neediest schools. So our system, the system that we have and maintain is, is a reason, including salaries, why our teachers are not where they need to be. So by holding our, by working with our superintendent and holding our, our, holding our district accountable to making those changes, we can start to see some of the remedies in our most, you know, in our lowest-performing schools that we need to improve their, improve their student outcomes.
Ms. Sung, I saw your hand next. Hello, do I have 30 seconds? Okay. Three things. One, House Bill 3 provides funding for us to increase the salary of master teachers once we identify them. Second, our superintendent is working on revising our evaluation system so that we can better identify and differentiate between teachers. Third, we have a constraint. Number one, the superintendent will not allow the district to operate without assistance to recruit and employ strong teachers to meet the needs of students needing the most support. And so there are three ways we probably monitor that as a board to make sure we are making progress through the year in putting strong teachers where they are most needed. I'm out of time for the. Thank you. And I, I want to state that if you are curious about the exact verbiage of that board constraint, you can find it on the HSD website, but it's there. If you're not a speed listener. Okay, yes, Judge Jefferson, and you'll be the last to answer this question.
Well, I would think the first thing we'd have to do is to work with the budget and see if we can find within the budget and process additional monies in order to raise teacher pay. As Ms. Sung pointed out, I did work with the district in a volunteer manner in 2019 in part of Centerville Three that passed added additional $100 million, part of which was intended to be used to raise teacher salaries. And finally, as a board member, I'm going to rely on the expertise of the superintendent to help guide us in how to get the best teachers.
Okay. Thank you. The next question that I have is, how is HISD prepared to, prepared with technology? We have to stay ahead of the curve. What do you believe is the next technology that HSD can make use of? Go ahead, Mr. Rosales.
We live in a day and age where we've seen with the pandemic, we can really do anything from anywhere. There's a lot of tools that are coming out. Like I said, my focus is putting students first and a world-class education. I'm also a big believer in a multilingual education, multifaceted, multicultural, cross-cultural. And that's why Hobby Elementary was where my kids were going the last two years. And now Warden Elementary, another dual-language school. But like I said, we have tools like Duolingo. We have many other language tools that are free or can be purchased to really make sure that our kids are prepared for a global future.
That is your time. That is your time. Ms. Dagard.
Thank you. The district worked to close the digital divide for our students when virtual learning was so critical last year. And I think it is essential that we continue to provide quality devices to our students and to have internet access at home, but also to help their families understand how to better use these technologies. There's that three-legged stool of having the device, having access to the internet, as well as using it effectively in, in our school curriculum and learning, and for the parents to also have access.
And then Ms. Gidry, I saw your hand next.
So, the question was, how do we prepare to go into the future? I think the virtual learning is something that we have to accept, is something that we're going to have to expect in our future. But in order to go even further into the future, what I'd like to see, a system where we can transpose teachers from a school or a location and submit them into a home. That way, they'll have direct personal learning with a teacher by transmission, and it's just innovative, is something a next level.
Thank you. Our next question is actually going to come from our Latinos for Education parents. We've asked a parent to come up and ask a question on her own.
My name is Noelia Fattick. I live in the Gulf Town in Houston, Texas.
Good evening to all. My name is Noelia Fattick, and I live in the area of Gulf Town, Texas.
I have three children. They are 10, 13, and 14, and they go to elementary school and middle school. My apologies.
I have several questions. The first one is, how do you ensure that HISD funds are distributed with equity?
Okay, I know, right? Hands went up all over the place. Mr. Dagard, I saw your hand first. Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for the question. The way that you ensure is you look at need on a campus-by-campus basis, and you look solely at need. It's one of those, everyone has an argument for why they need money. You have to take the intangibles out of it and just simply look at it objectively. Here's where performance needs to improve. Here's where budget is allocated.
Dr. Benzon, did I see your hand? Okay, yes.
Oops, sorry. Yeah, grab that way. Thank you.
I believe that every student deserves a high-quality education as well. And I think we need to invest in the social-emotional learning and restorative practices and more background services. There's a lot of inequities that are not just based on academics, it's based in the students' lives and their resources. So, I would support more support for them in those areas.
Ms. Santos.
Muchisimas gracias por esta pregunta. La primera cosa es que hay 17 indicators cuando son, I'm going to say this in English first. There are 17 indicators where our students are weighted to need, have different needs, whether it's low socioeconomic standing or so forth. I would increase the weights of those 17 indicators, up the PUA. And on top of that, give in enrollment-based stipend to schools with high concentrations of poverty.
Yes, one second. I'm going to, I'm going to do five folks this time because I know everybody's got their hands up. Dr. Baker, I did see you next.
We need a candidate that's not going to just talk about it, but be about it. We've had the last four years and four years prior, we've heard the same questions, we've heard the same answers. I commit to being about it. I want to streamline the budget with my microscopic point of view. Look at it first, go to the school, see what disparities are, and simply send the resources and send the monies where the disparity is at. Don't just talk about it, be about it. It's time for a change of the guards. Kendall Baker.
And Judge Jefferson.
I think first of all, we have to recognize that no single individual up here is going to be able to answer the question, how do we do it equitably? That is going to have to come from a commitment by the board as a whole and a commitment by the administration of HISD. And where does that come from? That comes from this parent and parents like her coming to the board and bringing to the board their concerns.
Okay, thank you. We're actually going to go to the second question.
My next question is, what do you believe of the education for our children with disabilities since they have been displaced and very little effective?
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Monroe.
Special Ed Department is a mess. Two years ago, I found out they misappropriated $2 million for special ed children. We need somebody to come through there and clean that place up. Bottom line, it can be done. The longer we play with it, the longer those children are not going to get the services that they say they're billing the state for. Where is the money?
Next, Ms. Lynn Villaseca. And I think that's the microphone you need. That was going to. Villaseca. The question again is about children with special needs.
Yeah. This is definitely a priority in the district. We know that there have been historical issues. We have two conservators from the state that are providing important feedback to our administration at this time in this matter. We need to make sure that the administration does, we hold the administration accountable for the action plans that are in place. We continue to increase funding, not only for dyslexia specialists, which we have done, we've invested 20-some-odd million dollars for that, but to continue to look for additional funding and make sure that our students are properly identified and they're getting the services they need in a timely manner.
I'm going to do two more responses, Mr. Kupinski and Ms. Walter. Special needs students deserve teachers who are more experienced, who are well-paid, and have capacity to work with them, and provided the best benefits. Did I capture all of it? Did I? Yes. All right, Ms. Walter.
I agree. I think these are some of the most important students in HISD, and we cannot let them fall through the cracks. And they can't have teachers that are just average. We need the best teachers for our special education kids. That way, we can get them, we can, we can set the bar higher. We need to set the bar higher for them and make them succeed. This is in our power, and we could do it with teacher pay.
Thank you. Before we go to our next parent question, I want to acknowledge that we've had a couple of, we've had a couple of folks ask about some broader, more national issues. And I think that this is a fair question for us to be asking about people. Ms. Walter, you were given a question about the mask mandate. However, we would like to know from the entire panel, and we're simply going to do an thumbs up, thumbs down. Now, both of these issues that I'm about to ask about are really not in the purview of this group, as the mask mandate has already been voted upon by the current board, and the other issue is not handled by the local school board as it deals with curriculum, which is a matter for the state. However, I would like to see simply a thumbs up, thumbs down in terms of your response to these issues. The issues as stated, not any particular policy position on them, but as stated to these issues, is your initial response a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Mask mandates within the school district? Everybody, either from up or from down. Folks who are curious about this, please take a look at the group. Now, this next one is one of the most misunderstood topics, but as it is understood, the application and teaching of critical race theory, thumbs up, thumbs down? I know there's a lot of nuance to that, but that is simply what was written on the card. Fair enough. Okay, so I've got, I'm certain that I have attorneys who are curious about that. Okay. With somebody who has a thumbs down and who is not really sure how to respond to that, I'd like to say, actually, Ms. Gidry, I don't think you responded yet, or you may have responded once, but I'd be more than happy to have you respond to this one as you are an attorney. I'm sorry. I, oh, Mr. Dagard. Sorry.
No, no, no. I can't respond. I guess the question was a little bit confusing.
Oh, fair enough.
Yes, the question was, I believe, the application? Can you read the question again?
Sure, it was just the application and teaching of critical race theory. Correct.
Are we in favor of teaching our kids history?
The question is critical race theory. Now, what I, what I assume, especially from some folks who have legal background, is critical race theory is a specific application of concepts that are appropriate for law school. That have to deal with systemic and historical bias and racism. So, it is possible that some folks are putting a thumb down because it's not necessarily appropriate for K through 12 education. It is possible that others are very curious about the application of history defined.
Popular, as a popular understanding of what critical race theory is, is teaching our kids where they come from, teaching our kids exactly what is necessary. You cannot extract history. You cannot extract the color of our skin. You cannot extract being hung. You cannot, those are real lived experiences that communities are still affected by. We, as a board, I know have the strongest anti-discrimination policy, I think, in Texas. Additionally, we are a board of nine women of color, I'm sorry, eight women of color, and then our other diverse board member, but yes, this board, well, I can speak for this board member, believes in teaching our kids history. Thank you.
Mr. Monroe, I didn't hear that.
I've had the opportunity to travel all over the country and interact with black people, Somali people, white people. I've even been to the Trump rally, for real. Anything that you decide comes out that looks like it's the it-now thing, from an African-American standpoint, we want to jump on it. Anything that teaches racism, anything that teaches division should not be in our classrooms. And in all actuality, if we're going to speak on teaching history, why don't you teach them the basic history?
Ms. Gidry? Did I see you end up? I'm sorry, just wanted to make sure. Ms. Gidry, I know, I know, there's, everybody has talked at least once at this point, so I want to make sure that she's actually acknowledged.
Let me just say this. If you don't learn your history, history repeats itself. We have got to learn where we came from and the differences between one another so that we all can understand, appreciate our differences, and that's how we learn to work together.
I'm going to let Mr. Rosales be the final speaker on this specific issue, simply because both of the other District Nine candidates have spoken on it, and we do have another parent question.
And not just, just to add, I also agree, we need to have strong history, strong civics. And as my other fellow opponents have said, we don't need division, we need unity, but we also need to know what the past has held so that we don't repeat it again. But again, we don't need division, but we need to know, and we need to celebrate the excellence and the merits of all of our people, especially our black community, our Hispanic, and even our Anglo, because really, we're a multicultural country, and that's what we need to be doing.
Thank you. We're going to switch gears a little bit and have parent questions from Discovering You. We'll have a group of parents from Discovering You here this evening. Go ahead. You just got that first one.
Hello. Okay, so my name is Courtney. I'm a parent from District Two. And so I live in District Two, formerly North Forest, historically black area. It is changing currently, but I want to know specifically, what is your focus for the black students? We hear black and brown, but when it, but then when it comes to Latino, we hear Latino. So, what is the thing for black students? And is there a plan to create a bilingual, to make them bilingual so that they can move into the job economy fairly?
Thank you. Dr. Baker, I saw your hand first.
First book, class of 1983, Fontaine. That school district was messed up because of corruption. I plan to take a personal look at the disparities in the black schools and the brown schools and get the resources and the monies that they need. Now, one person can't do it alone, but I'll definitely, you will know, I put it on the table for the other 10 to decide. I'm with you, sis.
Ms. Lindner, I saw your hand next.
I think the approach for black students is the same for any student that we have in our district that is not getting the resources and the, that they need. We have to put a focus with data-driven information to understand what the needs are and apply the resources effectively. The view that we have at a board level gives us the ability to allocate our budget where the need is. And so our budget absolutely has to reflect the vision we have, and that is for every single student to succeed, black, brown, white, everything.
I saw Ms. Dagard next.
Thank you. Yes. I think, you know, looking at our data is part of it. We know that our African-American third graders are reading close to 10 points below our Hispanic third graders. And this is even below our economically disadvantaged students in the aggregate. So, that needs to be priority number one. I think also making sure that this, our African-American students are, there's a culture of expectation of achievement. And for example, NASA is trying to diversify their engineering force, but we are not prioritizing high-quality math and science programs.
I've got to stop you, Ms. Dagard. And the last one to answer, and this is going to be Dr. Benzon, she's only spoken once, and I did see her hand.
Thank you. I went to Booker T. Washington. I, the reason I went there is because of the resources. It was an engineering high school, and I wanted to be an engineer. And so that's what we need in schools. We need it to be engaging and inviting, and we need to do, we need to recruit kids and say, there's really good stuff happening here. And so that's what we need to do, and that's, that's what, that's what charter schools are doing. So, we need to do the same thing. We need to be awesome, and we need to share that with everybody. And so that we have resources, good resources.
This last question is going to go to Mr. Walker, Mr. Dagard, and Ms. Walter. And we may have enough time for others, but everyone, oh, Ms. Villaseca, you've only spoken once, is that correct? Okay. Those four folks are definitely going to get priority in answering this last question because they've only spoken once. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nikita, and I am a very concerned parent. My questions to you guys are, is we have funds that have been given to HISD's police department, and they are being currently looked at to increase them with tasings and body cams and things of this nature, but we already have them using force in these low-income schools instead of focusing that money to help the students in those areas. I want to know, what is your plan to help us feel safe to send our kids to school without them being them being attacked? And also, to get them back in class if they're being told when we call to report that, hey, we see kids that are missing school? And to correct the, the actions that we're told, oh, we'll call HPD, because we can't do anything, but that's where the money is being spent. So, I want to know, what's the plan to fix the safety that's in place for these students, to secure them, and also to help us parents that go out there to get kids back in school, to be able to have a support system behind us to get them back in versus watching the officer ride down the street and park their car and have lunch or whatever they do?
So, 30 seconds each, and as I mentioned, there are four folks who are going to have priority of that question. Ms. Lynn Vilaseca, I'm going to give that one to you first.
Thank you so much for bringing up this question. I know recently, there was an agenda item, and it, it's died on the TASER and security camera issue. So, right now, that is not something that is being considered by the board. That being said, what we do need to do is increase social-emotional supports in our schools. We've started on that plan, but we need to do more. We need to make sure that our students don't feel threatened, they feel safe in school. Police presence can oftentimes make our students feel unsafe and threatened, and we need to make sure that we're sensitive to that and that our superintendent works with the police department on.
That is your time. Mr. Dagard?
Thank you. I'm going to address, given the 30-second limitation, only two of your points. One is cameras are better for everybody. That not only protects the officers, because everyone can see what's going on when there's officer interaction, but also protects the student and the public, because everyone can see what is occurring, it makes evidence gathering easier, et cetera. As far as the truancy, Councilman Pollard said that the District Day Patrol, which directed funds to deal with specific issues in the community, a similar program to that to specifically address truancy.
Mr. Walker.
Need is highly contextualized, and I don't think it's something that can be mandated from HISD headquarters. I am a big proponent of pushing funding down to the schools and getting the teachers in the schools so that they can identify and address these needs. It's just not something, you can look at data, you can look at best practices from across the United States, but ultimately, the people on the front lines need the money and power to be able to address that.
Ms. Walter.
I don't have a solution right now. What I can say is that when I am elected, I work for you. You are my boss, and I answer to you, nobody else. And if this is a concern, this is where I will put my time and my effort, and I'll figure out the solution to your problem, all of your problems. And I can't, I will work, that will be my job.
Thank you. We are exactly at 8:30. Now, I would like to thank all of you for coming tonight. I especially want to thank these candidates for joining us. This is not easy. It was incredibly difficult. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, for answering these questions of all of us. For those of you who are curious about them and their campaigns, please ask for their information. Thank you so much. Please follow us at Houston GPS on Instagram and Facebook. And I would like to thank my wonderful staff for putting this evening together. Thank you all. Get home safe, mask up.